It's 8:30. We'll call this morning's meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order for Tuesday, November 9th. Our first item is the approval of the agenda, and we do have one agenda addition, which is a request for a position change in the Assessor's Office.
Motion to approve the agenda with the addition. Second.
Thank you. Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Ebbinger. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carried. Citizens to be heard. Do we have any citizens to be heard this morning on items not on the agenda? None in the audience? Any online?
Do not, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We will move on to the approval of bills and vouchers.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ebbinger, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same? Motion carried. We have the minutes from October 26th.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Mojo. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign? Motion carried. We'll move into our 8:35 item, COVID-19 update with Kathy and Jamie. Becky is back with us again this morning. Good morning.
Good morning. Here are our weekly numbers for this week. So fortunately, as you can see, our active cases in Clay County have jumped up a bit, over 100 cases. So that's not great. And then our active cases in Minnesota also jumped up around 5,000 cases. So we're seeing the increase in Minnesota and in our Clay County region. Our active cases in Cass County just slightly went down, 15 cases. So not a significant decline. And then the active cases across the state of North Dakota did go up just a little bit as well. Our active cases by age, you can see again, the five to nine-year-olds are kind of the leading, the active cases by age. And that was similar to what we had last week as well. So that's, those cases have been continuing to increase by age. Then we have the cumulative cases, which is throughout the pandemic. Our total cases now are at 11,068. They, last week, they were at 10,717. So still seeing the age range of the 20 to 24-year-olds in that cumulative age range. Then it's Clay, our cases per week, starting from July. So you can see up to our current of October 31st. You can see the cases per week that are being reported as well. And this is the cases since March of 2020, the overall cases. And you can see now, you know, as we're seeing the increase in numbers, they've been up and down in October. So as the length of this wave has extended, we're also seeing the fluctuation of the cases as well. And then we'll go to Becky.
Good morning. So this is the graph that's put out by the CDC every week that shows the level of community transmission. So as you can see, the entire state of Minnesota is once again at that high, high level of community spread. Last week, there was one, one county that was that moderate, that yellow color, and now that has also increased to high spread. We did unfortunately have another death reported to us the past week. So our number, total number of deaths throughout the pandemic for Clay County is now at 100. And then this is the graph that depicts the number of COVID hospital admissions per week for Clay County residents. So we are starting to see another increase in hospitalizations, which is typical after, after we see a rise in reported cases. So usually hospitalizations are what we refer to as a lagging indicator. So we have a spike of cases, and then usually two to three weeks later, we'll see that increase of hospitalizations. So you can see for last week so far, the number of reported hospitalizations is at 11 for Clay County.
I have a question quick, Becky. Are those unduplicated numbers, or if someone is in for three weeks, are they showing up for the three weeks? Those aren't new admissions, right?
Correct. It's per case.
So if I was in for three weeks, I would be one in each of those weekly categories?
Right. So it goes by the date of admission. So if you were admitted, you know, like say October 15th.
Right.
And you were in there for three weeks, your number would just show up for that week of October 15th.
Right. So then if we've had 96 hospitalizations basically since August 1st, is there any way to know how many individuals that is?
Yes, there is. The hospitalizations for, are you referring to the next slide?
Yes, maybe where I'm going with that question is, one, what is the Clay County total hospitalization since we've had this surge in August, basically? And then just to kind of get an understanding maybe of what a current hospital stay is for those individuals.
Sure. And I mean, those are numbers that I, I could get. There are, a lot of times it's lagged, so it's hard to tell. So we get, you know, admission dates and then discharge dates as well.
I think it's not so much that I'm curious because I want another page for information, but I think it's, it would be an interesting piece of information to know.
Sure. Thank you. And then this slide just breaks down the recent hospitalizations of Clay County residents by age. So as you can see, the majority, 56% of those that have been admitted to the hospital during this latest spike of cases since August 1st have been under the age of 65. And then the bar graph on the right shows the breakdown of admissions by age group. And we have had a total of 94 cases admitted to the hospital since August 1st. And then this says hospital capacity for our local healthcare systems in Fargo continues to be a concern, as you can see by these numbers here. So at the time of this report, Ascenda and Fargo had no staffed ICU beds for adults or pediatrics. Sanford had two adult ICU beds available and one pediatric ICU bed available. The VA had one adult ICU bed available and then 11 regular, or 11 regular adult beds available. So total statewide ICU capacity for North Dakota as of yesterday was five available beds and three pediatric ICU beds.
That's for Fargo.
So this graph here is for our three healthcare systems in Fargo, but the statewide availability was five beds throughout the entire state for adults and three for pediatric. Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Kaylee.
Do we know, does the VA take overflow from like Sanford or Ascenda for non-veterans? Would they take somebody from the general population?
I don't know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure about that. We can certainly ask the hospital systems if that's a plan.
Because they have 11, and Ascenda has zero, you know?
Right.
Thank you.
Right.
I did hear something this week that the VA was giving booster vaccines to veterans and had the availability to do flu shots to the spouses of veterans, but could not do the booster shots to the spouses of veterans. So I would think that the service piece would end with those that are not members of the veteran community.
Yeah, I would think so, but not sure about that.
And then this slide shows statewide hospitalization for North Dakota as of yesterday. So there was currently, as of yesterday, 148 hospitalized due to COVID with 16 in the ICU. Last week, the number hospitalized was at 170, and the number in the ICU was 16. So the number of hospitalized COVID patients in North Dakota that are in the ICU has remained about the same, but the general admissions has gone down a little bit from last week. And then the chart in the middle shows hospitalizations broken down by age. So as you can see, there is currently one pediatric patient hospitalized for COVID. And then the chart on the right breaks down total admissions by age group throughout the pandemic. This is the updated graphic from the Sanford healthcare systems. So as you can see, we continue to see the same trend, week after week. The red people represent those that are not vaccinated, and the white represent those that are vaccinated. The overwhelming majority of hospitalized cases continue to be among those that are not vaccinated. 32 of the 33 patients on ventilators are not vaccinated. And then breakthrough cases, this is updated weekly by the Minnesota Department of Health. Again, seeing the same trends where breakthrough, percentage of breakthrough infections are negligible. So we're at a little over 2%. Breakthrough hospitalizations even less, at 0.092%, and breakthrough deaths at 0.015%.
Again, does this include, does this include the Fargo hospitals?
I believe so. So it would be anyone.
Information out of Fargo that might have Clay County people?
Right. So it goes by residency. So if a Minnesota resident is hospitalized out of state, they would be included in that.
Commissioner Ebbinger.
Is, is there being an effort made to track any variance in a breakthrough case between people who have received a booster and people who have just had the initial immunization?
That I'm not aware of. I know some testing companies are sequencing test results. I know Vault is one of them. So, you know, if you are tested at the Vault site, those, those results are sequenced. But I don't know specifically if they're looking at booster, you know, breakthrough infections for people that have had a booster dose. Is that your question?
Yeah, it just seems that would give some traction of the efficacy of the booster.
Yeah, we can certainly follow up with MDH and see if there's any tracking of that.
Yeah, I mean, and again, to echo Commissioner Mojo's, I'm not looking for another page in the report. It just seems that would be a useful bit of information on people who are considering getting a booster but aren't doing so because of other concerns.
And you know, it's Commissioner Ebbinger and Mr. Chair, it's, you know, the Moderna boosters and the J&amp;J boosters, you know, just got started. So it might be a little early, you know, to track those. Pfizer booster was out. So not sure where they're at with that, but it might be something we'll certainly check on.
I did notice, aside on the docket website I've got, I got a booster three weeks ago, four weeks ago, still not reflected. So I don't know if that, and it was from a pharmacy in Minnesota. So I don't know if that information's not getting through or it's not getting updated, but.
Mm-hmm. That's a little bit of a delay.
They may be losing some data there if they're not getting it in.
Becky, I have a question. I look at the cases per week, and I look at where we were on the 31st of October with 291 cases, and I compare that to July 18th of four, or six.
Six.
And is that, how do, how do we get there? How do we get from being down? Is this a result of the Delta variant, or is that about when that, when that thing started showing up?
Yes. Yeah, we saw these trends start earlier in the, in the southern states back in, I think it was the end of July, sometime, you know, during the summer months where we started to see case trends go up in the southern states. And then we lag usually a little bit behind them and had started to see the same trends. So yes, everyone is referring to this as the Delta surge.
Okay.
Okay. Good morning. The next thing we'll look at is the statewide vaccine data as of November 4th. And they added now with the five and over because as of last week, the five through 11 are able to be vaccinated. So that did bring our total percentages down from 73.8 last week for the number with one dose to 66.9%. So that's what that dip is because of that. And then the, those that had completed the series, the 70.3 was what we had last week, and now we're at 63.8. But if you look below, they're now tracking those children from five through the age of 11. And there's 1% of the eligible in the population that have received that first dose and not the second dose, of course. And so that's basically what we're seeing is the, the data numbers are a little bit different because of the fact that we've now started to vaccinate the five to 11 population.
So those are percentages based on eligible?
Yes, exactly. So we feel like we keep going backwards because of the age group dropping, but that's a good thing, that we have them eligible. So then looking at the, the Clay County public health doses, our total as of last week, 16,539. And we vaccinated 720 last week, and we had opportunities for additional appointments. So we are continuing to do scheduled appointments, but we don't turn people away because there's always people that don't, that no show for their appointment. So we squeeze them in, but we're not advertising for walk-ins. It becomes more paperwork, basically, that has to be entered. So, but we don't turn anyone away. So it was a busy clinic. It was our first clinic in the Family Service Center using the ITV room, and I think it went really well. We had a good number of staff and opportunities for people to have the 15-minute wait, lots of seating, and so it went very well. We've got a lot of compliments on that.
Jamie, are you tracking those that are getting the first and second dose versus the booster in that 720?
Yes, yes, we are. Yeah. And we do offer both, all three, every time. So I will talk about what we're doing this week. First of all, the five to 11 population, the students, we are the children. We will have vaccine available after the 16th. So next week, we'll have vaccine available. Tentatively planning, we're going to do an after-school and to the evening clinic at the Family Service Center. We're going to start with that, see what the response is to that. Again, we talk about that we meet with the superintendents every week, and we've talked about we will, we will meet the need as, as there is a need. Sounds like some of the schools are being reached out to by the pharmacies too, so they're taking advantage of those opportunities as well. But this week, we have a clinic today. Our clinic is from 12 to 6 o'clock at the Family Service Center, and we're offering the Moderna and Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine boosters. And then we're also offering the first and second doses each, for each of those vaccines. And that's it.
All right.
Mr. Chair, we also handed the, the testing activities for the Vault testing site. And we've mentioned before, they added the rapid test, which was a great addition for those on the Clay County side. So they can get a rapid test as well as the PCR test. So we see a little bit of an increase in the number of people that are availing themselves to that testing site. They are still accepting North Dakota residents as well as Minnesota residents were going to the Fargo site for rapid testing when we didn't have that. So it's a good, good thing to have it on this side of the river. So we'll see the, probably the numbers continue to go up as testing increases.
I noticed here on the week of October 24th, 12.98% positive.
Yep.
Compared to seven in two weeks before.
Right. Yeah. Which, you know, as we know, the, the Delta variant is circulating pretty significantly still. And we also have, if you notice in there, the non-Minnesota residents of 230, and then the Minnesota residents of 583. So yeah, the percentage of positivity is up a bit.
I have a family member that went there last week to get the booster shot. He was very complimentary of how it worked. It was very, I mean, how well it was organized and stuff like that. So he must be running a good shop.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have, the first one, we have a request for approval of change order number two for the Resource Recovery Construction Project.
Go Clones.
I would say, go Clones.
Go Clones.
Been disappointed this year in the football season, but oh, well.
Well, at least you didn't come up here with another color mask.
I haven't drank the Kool-Aid as some have yet, so.
Won't see me in, what is it, green and gold?
Because they beat my Wildcats.
That's what that's about.
It was big, too. It wasn't even close.
Wasn't that big.
All right, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. This morning, before you, for your consideration, we have change order number two, Resource Recovery Facility. We've actually had some initial discussions brought forward by Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Mojo earlier on in this process, as it kind of goes back to earlier this summer when we had some of these issues. As we've discussed previously, when it comes to the projects like this and working with construction engineers, we have three different areas that we work out of. Construction contingency, which is essentially to cover any unforeseen expenses that weren't covered in the initial construction documents. This project has an allowance for an escalation in pre-engineered metal building and also the scale, the scale building. But what we're here for this morning is the owner contingency. There's four items, CP1, CP2, but CP2 has an A, B, and a C, and that has a total of $137,266, which would be in addition to the guaranteed maximum price previously set. And I do have Kirk here to maybe just touch base on a, on a few of the different items that are, that are on our list today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to walk through these very quickly because it's, it's things that have been talked about before. CP1, essentially, it was adding 55 linear feet for a change order of $5,024. The main reason why the, the change occurred was there was improper identification on drawings that we received from the city. And we were trying to stay away from existing utilities and things like that. So we needed to make that change. So that's CP001. The, the second one is really, really pretty aggravating to me in more ways than one. Again, we got some inaccurate drawings from the, the city, and our partners were, were paying for the mistake, 100%, which I have an issue with. Doesn't seem like that's what partners are supposed to do. We're supposed to share the benefits and share the, the pain as well. But that's an editorial comment for what it's worth. So the, the change order on this was the water main extension running to our, our facility was misidentified again on the drawings we received from the city. And when I say misidentified, I mean misidentified, it was 270 feet off. And to give you an idea, 270 feet, that's almost three football fields. So that's a pretty significant mistake. Or 300, I'm sorry, one football field, is what I'm saying. So the, the point is, is that it's very, very significant. And, you know, if the information would have been correct, we would not have had this particular issue. So the, the 12-inch water main extension, it added $94,000 to it. And in addition to that, there was a water main, a 4-inch water main that serviced the, the park and the concession area. And the, again, that was misidentified on the, the drawings as well. In an effort to try and find the 12-inch water main, the contractors did find the 4-inch water main and punched a hole in it, and we had to provide a temporary service to the, the park and the concession stand. So as Steve mentioned, the change order here is for $137,266. And I'll stand and answer any questions we may have.
Any questions? Commissioner Grove.
These miscalculations that come up, why does that make us our responsibility?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, I think that's a very good question. I, as I mentioned, you know, we are supposed to be partners in this, this effort. And I, we have been unsuccessful in trying to get them to share in the cost.
We, we did meet on several occasions regarding this. We met with the City of Moorhead, Moorhead Public Service. We met with the construction engineers and Houston Engineering, who has kind of helped on our behalf in terms of, of the planning for it. And there was some, there was some documentation in there that also said that they were not absolutely certain as to where the location was. But to be off 100, or 297 feet is quite a bit. But once again, you had every entity pointing finger at the other entity, and the end result is the, the one doing the work is probably going to be the one paying for it.
Mr. Chairman, you know, I mean, one of the problems I have, I mean, and you have all heard me say this a million times, I mean, it doesn't matter whether it's right pocket or left pocket, it's taxpayer pocket. You know, and I, I think that, you know, ultimately, the taxpayer is the one that is going to be paying for it. But unfortunately, we're the ones that are responsible for the bulk of it, so.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. I will also concur that I really felt we did our due diligence to honor what other partners had wanted in terms of what came out of what that relocate would, would be in terms of what, where water was and what services were provided at other facilities. And, you know, I can really say that we really did go, obviously, above and beyond to make that happen. I think going forward, we are much more aware of certain issues, and maybe we'll be less likely to provide such conveniences if there's not partners willing to step up. And I think that clearly this, from the beginning, when we advocated in St. Paul, was a joint Moorhead and Clay County facility, and that's what made the most sense. This certainly will provide services to all of Clay County, whether they live in Moorhead or Rusted or Holly. I mean, the reality is, like you say, it's going to come out of a taxpayer's pocket, no matter what it is. But going forward, we will certainly maybe be less likely to provide things that might be overruns like this. You know, I, in the end, I think we need to move forward. Construction engineers has been really good about protecting our investment and our obligations. And so nobody loves change orders. Nobody likes them. But certainly, the end result will be a better project because of it.
So on this change order, one of the, one of, what's happening here is this is, this is coming out of the owner contingency. You know, so we did, we did, and Steve, maybe you can correct me, but I think our number that we had in owner contingency was 500,000?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we had total credits of $653,006 from, from the work that we did on the road realignment.
Yeah, and we had, and we had transferred that.
Into our owner contingency because initially, as we, as we looked, as the prices escalated, we initially didn't have any owner contingency there. And so we took advantage of that, or this board took advantage of that opportunity with the road realignment and, and making it a stronger project to, to save that additional dollars from the guaranteed maximum price.
So change order number one was the 653 credit.
That is correct.
And then change order number two now reduces the owner contingency by the 137,000, and, and then adjusts that into the GMP. So it removes it from a contingent. and then adjusts that into the GMP. So it removes it from a contingency to a GMP cost.
So the, Mr. Chairman, so the new, as Steve mentioned, the new GMP, our guaranteed price is $17,846, or $911.14. So it's, as you said, it's dropped $137,266.
But, you know, just for our new commissioners, when we did these other projects, a significant portion of our contingencies were always related to underground work, because that was always the most, you know, with the exception of the remodel project that we had at the juvenile detention center, that one was, when you get into remodeling, you don't know what's behind the walls and all that kind of thing, so you can anticipate some things, but there's always surprises. In the event of these contingencies, most of them happen as a result of underground. This project, we've also had surprises based on price of product. Steel has been a factor in also that cost, but fortunately, we locked most of that into the GMP, our price into there. But so we still looking at probably having 400-some thousand dollars in owner contingency. This project also had another $800,000 in contractor contingency, which is in the GMP. But anytime we use those, anytime that those numbers are used, that still gets county approval for even the contractor contingency to happen. And whatever isn't used in the contractor contingency, at the end of the day, goes back to the county. So just, you know, just so we're aware of this whole process moving forward. So even though it sounds like this change order is significant, it's still been planned for within our overall financial plan. You know, as the taxpayers listen to this, too, I think it's important for them to know that we're still well within where we need to be. So. Any other questions? All right, we're looking for a motion then to approve change order number two.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Commissioner, ever your second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the same sign? Motion carried. Next, we have a request for approval from construction engineers to be designated as primary designer, and there's reasons for that, right?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, part of our construction projects, there's through the IRS Section 179 code, it allows the designer of a construction project owned by a public or government agency to designate a construction, excuse me, designate a primary organization that can apply for some tax incentives based on, based on energy efficiencies of such as lighting or HVAC. Construction engineers has put forth that request for your consideration this morning. I would let you know that I did talk with Burns &amp; McDonald's, and Burns &amp; McDonald's is an employee ownership planner, an ESOP, which would not allow them to apply for this. And so they are requesting permission to be designed, or excuse me, designated as the primary designer, so they would receive that credit. At this point, they don't know what the total refund of that would be. This would provide them the ability to go forward and be assessed to see what that qualifying benefit would be. With that, I'd yield for any questions.
Any questions?
I would note that we also, this board did look at this at the law enforcement center and the correctional facility, and designating Klein-McCarthy at that time as the designer.
And they had a different ownership which qualified them.
All right.
Make a motion to approve the request. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the same sign? Motion carried. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kirk. All right, our 9-5 item, request to fill three vacancies for corrections officers. We have Sheriff Imping, and we have Justin. Good morning.
Morning. So I'm back asking to fill three vacant, open correction officer positions full-time. We recently had three resignations, just moving on and doing other things, not moving into another role in law enforcement. The positions are within our budget and are mandated by our staffing plan with the Department of Corrections.
I want to just bring up briefly, we did have a PIC meeting yesterday, and the turnovers at the correctional facility was brought up. It was brought up at my request, just to talk a little bit more about the review of the exit interviews. And for this board, and I want to reconfirm to you, Justin, that all indications are that this has nothing to do with management. This is all about other potential opportunities or other personal reasons amongst these people for leaving. So I, it's important that everybody is aware of that, that, you know, oftentimes, when you get high turnover, you can look to maybe some other internal issues going on there, and there certainly doesn't appear to be the case here, Sheriff, and I'm sure you probably are aware of that as well, but I wanted to publicly make that comment for you, Justin, especially that it's important for you to know that, so.
Appreciate that. It still doesn't change how stressful the situation is.
Yes, and we, we're there, we're there with you, so.
I understand that.
It's getting rather dire in there, being down 13. When we have, when we're slated for 51, you're down 13. It makes things tough right now. And I was here before saying our staff that we have left are doing a great job, and I stand behind that. That staff definitely is doing a great job in there. They're picking up as many extra hours and as many extra shifts as they possibly can and still stay safe, but they need their rest as well. So we've, I know we've discussed at PIC some options and some opportunities, and hopefully, maybe there's something we can do here in the future. I did go to our, to M State, their criminal justice program. I spoke with two classes down there in hopes to get some applications. I think we did get some applications from them. We just got to get some interviews set up, and I think that's kind of where we're lacking sometimes, is it takes a while to get some of that stuff set up, and we have to expedite that process so we can get offer letters out quickly and things like that. I know that. I spoke with one individual outside of the government center one day, and he asked me if we had a job in the law enforcement side, and I said, hey, we're looking at corrections right now. And he's like, I applied with you guys, but it took too long to get the interview done and this, so he went over to the juvenile center. So we, if there's a way to expedite that, we definitely need to do that.
Okay.
Curious to me that a position within the county, I mean, usually you hear that because it's another organization. I'm just curious to understand why a different department is so much faster.
Think we changed it a little bit. We never did offer letters before. Like, we would, we might do an interview and then just, you know, go right to a background, not do an offer letter, but now we're starting to do offer letters. So they kind of have that little carrot out there to where, hey, we're gonna, we're looking at you, just got to pass the background psych, physical, and everything like that. And I think that's a good thing to have that out there and have that offer letter to them. They don't get the final offer until after they pass that, and then that comes from HR. But for us to put that conditional offer out there is a lot better, and we haven't done that in the past, and we're starting to do that now.
Well, this is a problem that's happening here. It's happening in other facilities similar to ours, very close to us. The same thing is happening within our dispatch area. So it's, we really need to step up our game here in trying to solve this problem. There was a little bit discussion about, before the meeting started this morning, about other costs that are associated to this, and the fact that we have this brand-new facility that's supposed to be able to house up to 208 inmates in here, and we're still, we're shipping out people because we don't have staff. And I, that's really unfortunate. And we have to ultimately, in our plan, take into consideration that cost and how we're going to approach this. So I saw Commissioner Kaylee's hand up first, and I'll go to Commissioner Evernier.
Sheriff, I'm curious, in your conversations with students, if there was interest in part-time positions while they're still pursuing school, because these are full-time right now. So maybe that would be, you know, a change that we could make for a foot in the door for some more students to enter this career path, what you heard there?
Yeah, I definitely brought that up to them, let them know that we do have variable hour positions, and we will take what we can for variable hour as well, because they are able to cover those shifts. So that was definitely brought up, and we're hoping to see those applications as well. I also brought up to them that this is a very good opportunity for them, kind of the first law enforcement job for them, to where we're able to see how they work, how they operate. We're able to give them a good recommendation, or maybe even pick them up ourselves when they're ready to go into that law enforcement field. So I, I made it as appetizing as I possibly could for them in hopes that we'd be able to get some of those applications.
And since then, we have received four, four variable hour applications. We do have interviews scheduled with those individuals. Those four applications came in over a period of two weeks, which is more than what we've received in the last three to four months combined. So I do think that did help.
Good. Were you done? Okay, Commissioner Evernier.
Yeah, I think it's worth mentioning, we got a copy of the exit interview data yesterday, and it really speaks highly, as these employees are leaving, to the leadership, the supervision. They all, they described in very glowing terms. So if somebody's looking for a job right now, want to enter into a career, this is a place, although it's got its challenges, and I worked in law enforcement for 40 years, and stayed on midnights for almost five straight years. I actually wanted to in those days, but there's a time where we're losing people because the shifts are demanding. But the work environment there, I think HR's done a great job of showing that it's an exceptionally good one. And if people are interested in coming someplace where they're trained, where they're led well, this is a good opportunity for them, and they need to come look. I really appreciate the effort you guys are making, and we need to continue. We heard at the AMC Regional, the other counties talking about the difficulty, Wilkin trying to get full-time dispatchers. They can't find them, and they're at a loss for how to get people in. You're hearing the same thing across the river from their North Dakota counterparts, and we're hearing it all over, for dispatchers, for police, and deputy, and correctional positions. So this isn't anything you guys are doing wrong. You're doing a lot of things right, and that's come out in the surveys. So thank you for that, and we got to keep plugging.
Thank you for those comments. Anything else? We have a request to fill three full-time correctional officer vacancies.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Evernier. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the same sign? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep, you know, Sheriff and Justin, any other continued ideas or areas where you want us to pursue what we've talked about in other ways? Maybe go through Darren and we'll get it to PIC. Okay?
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. All right, I see Dave, he's just walking in. Maybe we can take Nancy's real quick here while Dave's coming in. Nancy, do you want to come up on your agenda addition? We'll do that real briefly here.
Good morning. Just a brief overview of our situation here. We currently have a job opening in our department, which is a data coordinator slash appraiser. It's kind of a 50-50 split between those duties. And that position was modified back in 19, when we had a long-term employee leave. We were able to hire a person in May, I believe, or September of 19. He stayed until May of 2020. Then when we were able to hire again, that person stayed for one month, and since that time, we've had it open. In July, we decided of this year to try it again. We interviewed basically everyone that applied. We did offer it to one, and that person declined it. Within the last couple of weeks, we've actually had an individual with an assessor's license apply. We interviewed, we offered it, but the wage was an issue. So what I would like to do is change it from this data coordinator to appraiser, to a full-time appraiser. And then those extra duties would then be spread to the other appraisers in the office.
This was brought up yesterday at our PIC meeting, and we had a discussion on it. And one of the, you know, we talked about, and I think Nancy, you think your goal would be, you'd like to have this person in place December 1?
Yes.
And so for the remain, now, keep in mind now that the entire year 2021, Nancy had a position budgeted that was never even.
Filled.
Filled. And so, you know, so, you know, whether it's three or four or $5,000 cost for the month of December, you have a lot more than that budgeted. The only issue that comes into play is her 2022 budget included that position, but it included it at the step, or line 14, step 3.
Oh, well, step 1 act.
Or step 1. And whereas now, for, now in this particular case, it would be at line 16, step 3. So there would be a slight change. I think that was, that amount, I think, was $5,000, wasn't it, or something?
Darren, we figured the figures, and it's about $8,700.
Okay. More additional for the entire year 2022. However, you had savings all of 2021 of...
Roughly $67,000.
Yeah, so, so it, our PIC group felt this was appropriate to move forward, and the PIC recommends approval of this request. Any questions?
Just want to thank you and your department for the flexibility in addressing the shortfall of not having an adequate pool of candidates and trying to tweak it so that we can still offer a great service to our citizens. So thank you for that. We'll make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Gross. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What was the same? Motion carried. Good luck. Hopefully, this person will join us.
I hope so.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
All right, Dave. You have several items today.
Still got my mask that you like, Kevin?
Yeah.
I did get up to visit my daughter last night, so it was kind of fun to go.
You, I guess you have a reason to wear it.
So, yeah, we got a few.
Obison.
Few things on the agenda.
Who won that game, Dave?
It wasn't us. It was good, though. They took it right to the end this time. Next year.
Okay, let's get to business here. Approval to acquire brush mower.
Right, so we, we did get a sale on our boom mower, and I think we ended up with, like, the heck was it on here?
92 something.
Yeah, 92, 250, and then the county, we have to pay a 6% sales commission. So net proceeds for the boom mower were $8,671.50. That min bid site has really been working out really good for us for sale of used equipment. I did get a couple of comparable quotes for a Skidster-mounted brush mower. The one that we would like to go with is for sale at Fargo Tractor. It's Vernig is the brand. It's an 84-inch, and it's an industrial cutter. It's got, it's actually got four different cutting blades in there, and it, it looks like something that will work really good for us for brushing our right-of-ways. The cost on that is $13,350. You can see there's quite a bit of Internal Service Fund dollars in there, so the, there will actually be an excess that will remain in the Internal Service Fund. So the, there will actually be an excess that will remain in the Internal Service Fund.
Question.
Commissioner Mojo.
Thank you. I see that there's a lead time of 17 to 19 weeks on this. Is the implement industry seen, obviously shortages of inventory, like everything, but are they seeing increases to implements in, in terms of what things were a year, a year ago? And if so, does it make sense for us to purchase this now because of inflation or should we wait?
So we got a price on this about a month and a half ago or so. And then in the, in the time being of getting a comparable quote, it went up 350 bucks. So I mean, and I don't know if that was just freight, I suppose, because the price of diesel and everything else right now is really spiking up. But another item on our, on our list is those mowers and those are astronomically going up. So I guess I would have to lean on that we are gonna see continued increases in prices of equipment.
Right, so, you know, it, I'll maybe compare this to the lumber industry. It really didn't make sense for anyone to be building decks in June of this year to maybe wait until that bubble bursts a little bit. Are we thinking that there will be?
It's not really getting any feeling that a price is gonna come down much. That's the only kinda scary part is, you know, with lumber, I think there was some talk that it would come down. And maybe I've heard some people say that it has come down.
Right.
A little bit, but I don't know with equipment, I'm really not getting that from, whether it's from RDO or Butler Machinery or these guys, it just doesn't sound like.
Well, and I, I understand that because they've got folks on payroll, so they need people to purchase. I just don't wanna be, you know, if, if we can push something a little longer to do that. I, granted, I do know that the timing of this would be perfect to get it for next year's season, but I'm just curious if it financially makes sense to maybe hold off on some of these.
I think every indication when it comes to steel that things aren't, they aren't coming down and they're, they're not anticipated to come down. We heard the same thing even, we had the same discussion, should we be waiting in terms of the regional? Just, not dispatch, but the regional.
Transfers.
Recovery facility, resource recovery facility. And, you know, I don't know how, how long you can wait and do you ever anticipate steel to come down? Certainly, certainly the lumber has, but. I mean, you can hold off and you can wait and, but then you may not, you might not, you might just see it continue to rise too, so it's.
I will say too, since I asked the question, I think it's important to note that we have the finances available to make these purchases. But, and so I, I'm not gonna vote against this today, but I think this maybe goes for all of our departments, that we should carefully evaluate if it makes sense to add an extra year on to how long we're using current equipment. Because I think, I just don't think this level of inflation is sustainable. And, you know, I, I know that all of us in our personal lives are deciding, does it make sense to buy a new car right now? Probably not. But it doesn't make sense to buy a used car when they're spiked like crazy either? Probably not.
Yep. All right.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Gross, second by Commissioner Evering. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same, motion carried. Approval to sign BNSF railroad crossing agreement. That's attachment.
This is for the crossing in the city of Comstock that will come with our project next year. There is a main line belonging to BNSF as well as a spur line. They've actually been in really good and fairly timely to work with. I don't know if there's been some new people, but it's, we were able to get this agreement back from them in fairly timely manner. This would be for the, the crossing work that the railroad does most of that work. We just did with Big Project in Glendon, it's the same deal. They are, they take care of all the crossing work for this and the road user is responsible to pay for it in this case. It should fall underneath the diversion authorities project as they're sponsoring this one for us. So there should be no, no cost to Clay County on it. They are expensive. I think their total cost on this was $113,732 and that would be for both 54-foot long tracks, the spur line and the main line.
Any questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the crossing agreement and a second motion by Commissioner Evering, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign, motion carried. Approval for?
That comment, this will be greatly appreciated. I don't know if you've driven over those tracks recently, but especially if you're hauling anything of weight, it's rough.
They definitely need to be replaced.
It's really rough. So this is definitely going to be appreciated.
All right, next Dave.
Yes, I'll maybe have Justin give some information on this one. This is something that he's been working for in the city of Glendon with that turn lane project.
Yeah, so in order to complete the LPP project in Glendon, we had to get an appraisal for the rightofway that we needed to acquire. This is the turn lane project that Mendota's sponsoring. The appraisal came back at $7,200. The reason that it took so long to get the appraisal is last week or the week before, we came in with the condemnation and we couldn't actually get the appraisal completed until we got a legal description for that little strip that was kind of in no man's land. So now we got the updated appraisal to purchase the rightofway needed for the turn lane project.
I think there was a, there was a change in ownership too and.
Yep, there was.
The, the work that they had done initially, they had to update just due to the new owner. But I think we got everything pretty well where we need it now. And if approved, we can move forward and we can purchase this little piece and have very little remaining work to do so we can complete the project. The condemnation has a couple more steps to go through. The county attorney's office will take care of that like we did with the County Road One condemnation. And once that's all done, the plans are to a point about 90% or more.
They're fully approved.
Fully approved.
We can just, once we get the rightofway acquired, we can go out to bid with this project, which will be good because the lead time on signal arms is quite extensive right now too.
You mentioned that there's gonna be a change in ownership. Who owns it?
Well, there, there was already.
Yep, there was. So it's, I believe it was Dirk before and now it's a company called Winter Park Properties.
And that's the storage shed.
Yep.
Business there in the corner, so.
I think Frank might be referring to the.
The no man's land?
The no man's land.
Yeah, no, there's no change in that. No man still owns it.
Okay.
Just the storage facility. And most of the rightofway that we are acquiring is unusable anyway because it's all underneath Excel's high lines. Then we have had some discussions with this land, the new landowner and he's all for the project.
Okay.
Their request is to approve the rightofway appraisal of $7,200. Is that correct?
Yep.
I'll move. Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same, motion carried. Our next item is approved to acquire two rotary ditch mowers.
Right, so we replaced two of these last year after four years. And our idea was to keep two more to see how that would work. And when we initially bought the Schulte mowers, they were a little more expensive than the ones we were, were previously kinda using, which were Tiger, I think they were Bush Hog mowers.
Bush Hogs, yep.
And these ones were considerably more expensive, but they were a better mower. And we have definitely found that they hold up better. The repairs and, and the costs over the course of the four years is drastically less. They're not down, you know, downtime is actually as bad as the cost to repair them. So we replaced two of them last year and then when we sat down with the dealer to replace these last two, the price increase was astronomical. I wish we would have replaced all four last year. We would have saved probably about $17,000 per unit. It's just staggering. We've since got an email that there's gonna be a 9% to 12% price hike in mid-November if we don't purchase. And I asked the guys, maybe we should consider a different mower. They really didn't wanna do that. They're happy with what we have. They've held up. They've saved the county money. And we, like I said, we've kept these ones five years already. We kept them a year longer. And I think that moving forward, we will be able to do that. It was a good test to do that. So unfortunately, the, I think we're gonna need to replace these things. And that's why I'm recommending we do move forward, even though there is this big price hike. But it's something that's very, very needed. If we don't get the ditches mowed, we have an awful time in the wintertime because then the, there's a little bit of grass that would be out there would just cause huge snow drift problems and you'd be fighting it all winter long.
Questions? Commissioner Mojo.
Just to clarify, each unit has gone up $17,000? So then the unit discount of 32% is $15,600. Is that per unit?
Correct, yep, per unit. So that, yeah, that's the cooperative purchasing or, you know, like, that's the discount that we get from Sourcewell.
So has that, has that gone up to match with the inflation?
Right, it stayed at 32% from, so it's 32% of the bigger number. So I think, I think the last time we went in, that number was like 37 or $34,000, that unit total. That's kinda like retail. So we're getting 32% of that bigger number as a discount. The freight went up, the, the PDI at the dealership has went up. That steel surcharge, that's brand new. We didn't have that last time. The trade allowance went down. I think we had about $10,000 on trade last time, but they were only four years old. Now they're five years old, so would make sense. We kept it another year. We lost a little bit of depreciation, of a year's depreciation and the price went up, I think it was like around $13,000, $14,000. Because I think that unit total number a year ago, well, we got the, we got the bid in December of 2019 and it was a 2020 purchase and I think it was like $34,000. So that went up $13,000 or $14,000 right off the top.
Say that, say that last part again.
So that, the current price, the, the retail price that they're starting at is $48,802. And a little over a year ago, it was about $34,000.
And back then, did we receive the same 32%?
Correct. Yep. That Sourcewell discount has not changed.
But the amount has because the price has gone up so high.
Correct, yep.
But then the 32%. Steel surcharge wasn't on there before.
32% of whatever the price of the machine is.
Yep.
So this year, it's a higher number because it's.
Yeah.
In hindsight, we would have bought four a year ago and saved a lot of money.
How much is it going up in the middle of the month if we don't?
I think they said 9%.
Okay.
And I was gonna hold this and talk next week at Highway Committee, but I just really felt that I didn't wanna lose that 9% because we more than likely would have. They said mid-November, the price was going up.
And the shop has run the numbers and with the amount of downtime and repairs and stuff, it is still totally makes sense to.
Right. Had these only been four years, you know, we would have kept it another year, but now we did. Now that we kept it another year, we just got kinda stuck in this price hike situation and.
Dave, you said that the price is gonna go up another 9% in.
Right.
When is that?
Mid-November.
Mid-November. So what's the steel surcharge for then? That's 10%, right?
Right.
Close to it.
I don't know. So the, the increase of the machine, it's a, it's a different, you know, the last machine was a Series 4, this is a Series 5. So the, the price of their machine went up and then they throw a steel surcharge on top of it. I don't, I don't know.
Let me rephrase my question.
Okay.
So the, the units that we're looking at, are they, are they available now?
Correct.
They are available now.
Yep.
So why would there be a steel surcharge on something that's available? It seems to me that a steel, a surcharge would be something because like our buildings, it's something that you wait for and by the time you actually can get them, the price may have gone up. But if we're given a price of $48,000 and, and the machine is, if we were to walk in the door today and write them a check, it's based on the retail price less the discount and the freight charge and then your dealership. But why, why a surcharge over and above everything else?
My guess is that Sourcewell number, they have to give those numbers. So since they gave that number to Sourcewell, from the time then to the time now, the price of steels went up that much. Because they have to provide that number to Sourcewell every year. That'd be their, you know, they, they've got a advert, you know, it's advertised and they provide that number for the cooperative purchasing. And my guess is since then, just like if we take gravel bids from, let's say Turner Santa Gravel and the price of diesel goes sky high, there is a, there's a diesel surcharge that he gets compensated.
I'm really confused because if I go someplace right now, if I'm gonna go and I'm gonna buy a snow blower in a store in town and they have a retail price, that retail price is based on me taking it that day and it, why, a surcharge is for something that's in addition?
I'm assuming they're just making up costs for their units. I wish we could say we're not gonna pay this steel surcharge, but that's, that's the number on the quote that we got from Schulte that comes from Butler Machinery.
Are they there? It didn't give you the serial numbers because it says factory ordered.
I could see it, I could see it if it's something that they didn't have in stock.
Right away, or do you think?
That it's still something they have to build.
I would guess that they're not there.
Kevin ever say?
Yeah, I guess I never asked that question. I don't.
It seems, it seems to me that if, if it's, if it's in the store.
Yeah, I guess I hear what you're saying, that they're, they haven't paid for the higher price of steel yet. So maybe it is a manufacturing deal where they're not made yet. And then the increase is for the new models that are being ordered.
So I'm, this is gonna be an unpopular comment, but I, I really struggle with that $17,000 inflation per unit this year. I think this is an item where I would much rather wait to see and get that extra year of use out of the ones we have. I get what the guys are saying. I live in the country. I know the importance of it. But I'm not quite sure if I can justify that amount of money.
And I know we have absolutely been told that, I don't think that that's going to come down, but.
I mean, it's doubled the cost of the equipment.
I agree. I mean, I called other vendors. I, I've done a lot of, looked quite a bit of legwork on this because Butler's not the only one that sells this.
Right.
Schulte pulled it off in Minnesota state bid altogether. It's not even on the state bid. You know, and I think last time we did buy them, we bought them through the state bid cooperative purchasing. But now this is through Sourcewell, so they do have a Sourcewell number, but it's, so I checked with other vendors and I, I come up with nothing different on it because I was the same way. I'm like, this, one year's time, it went up that much. It's ridiculous, but.
It seems to me if something's gone up that high and it's got to do with the price of steel, why, why would the trade in drop significantly then? You'd think that the, you know, Commissioner Mojo gave the example, you go into a lot and right now you, you might pay a lot more than you ever have for a new truck, but you're even probably paying more for something used. That's really what's happening right now. You, you can put a used vehicle on the market right now and you get more than you ever have for it.
Right.
And, and in this particular case, we're trading something in and they're gonna give us less than we did before.
And we have thrown around the idea too of putting them on min bid for, with a $7,200 minimum bid or a reserve, just to see if we can get more on that, but that doesn't help the cost of the new unit right now.
So going to Commissioner Mojo's questions, so the, the two existing ones, if we were to keep them for a while, what is, what is, what's it gonna cost us?
I don't know. I mean, it'd be a six year of using it, so it would just be kinda rolling the dice to see how you would, how it would hold up.
And I think I say that knowing that, I mean, I know how your crew treats equipment and I know how it's repaired and kept up to date. It's not like the Mojo boys are driving it and it's just getting destroyed. So I mean, like an extra year with your crew is significantly better than what I observe at my house.
Well, it's a.
I'm not surprised. I knew with the increase that there would be conversation, that it'd be small chance we'd get approval, small chance we wouldn't. And so I'm not overly surprised based on the pretty significant price, price hike. Little, little leery on keeping something one more year, but if we have to, we have to. And we'll just have to see how, how things hold up.
Well, I mean, you might need new parts for it. I, you know, that's, goes with anything. You can have something brand new and you might end up having to still replace some parts to it. Something is going into rugged areas like those things. Something is going into rugged areas like those things do.
I don't know. It's a. Any other comments? Commissioner Kaylee.
Do we feel that by next week, that nine percent price will have happened?
That's what they're telling me. The one, the one, you make a good point. The one thing we could do is we could have our shop staff come to the Highway Tracking next week and, and just hear a little more. Or, you know, maybe, maybe next week, we go to Highway Committee with shop staff and try to explain to the two commissioners there. And, and he can give his account on what, keeping it one more year, what he feels. And then if things change, we could come back the following week and, you know, maybe, maybe we could sneak underneath that price hike. All I know is they said mid-November, so I got a little worried with that, but.
Do you think we could talk to them and say, hey, our commissioners are being real sticks in the mud? Can you hold off out a week on that price hike for us, or, you know?
We could certainly try to see if we can extend that.
Again, I go back to, that's what I'm, that's what, to me, what the steel surcharge would be for. An unanticipated cost to manufacture. That's, to me, that's what that surcharge would be about.
I guess I would just like to hear from the shop guys for sure on what they anticipate would need to be fixed in the next year, and what parts, prices are looking like, and.
We can get more detailed information on that surcharge and.
And the, the bid shows no stock number or serial numbers, factory ordered. So this is something that's still in the supply chain, I imagine, and that's how they're making the adjustment in order to order it.
But they shouldn't need both the surcharge and the nine percent. That's my, that's my argument there, that, that's, you know, that amounts to eight thousand dollars right there, to, over the above the seventeen thousand increase. And price that, that in itself must account for some increases in production cost.
I did make a call too last week and asked if they could up a trade number a little bit, and I'd run into a roadblock there too. Because I, I thought the same thing. Maybe we can get more, more of a trade. Maybe they give us a lowball trade. But their, their used equipment guy didn't budge on that either.
All right, Dave, we have a Highway Tracking meeting that's next Tuesday. Let's, on that agenda for, for more discussion. And then we will bring it back to the board.
Okay.
All right, we'll move into your last item. Is, anything else?
I said thank you.
Okay. The last item is the approval for, of DNR Funding Application Sponsor Resolution 2021-50. That's attachment I.
This is the, the resolution, sponsor resolution and funding trail application. It's for the Agassie Recreational Trail, starts at Yulin and goes north five miles to the county line. I work with Steve on this every year, as he and I both sign it. Essentially, what we do is we put together what costs we feel it's going to cost the county to maintain the trail, and it's mowing and light grading, if there's any trees that are down, some brushing. In the past, we've had some work, some decking work being done, because there is a little bridge just north of Yulin. And we put this together and worked through Diane at the DNR. She's really good to work with. And we do it every year. I think it's due November 30th, so put this together with real similar costs. It's not a big burden to the county. We don't spend a lot of money on it, but it's nice. I think Norman County mows, their, their stretch is significantly longer, so they mow our stretch for us as well, and then we just reimburse them back. And then once a year, I request funds from the DNR to pay the county back.
Who's to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Crowe, second by Commissioner Mojo to approve Resolution 2021-50. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Resolution 2021-50 has been adopted. We will, I've had a request to take a very short break before we get into our committee report. So we'll be back in five minutes. Joe, all right, we are back in session. The remaining item on our agenda is the committee reports. I am going to start with Commissioner Mojo today.
Thank you. Last week, I attended the MetroCog Executive Committee meeting. We did have a long discussion. They're currently trying to hire an employee, and employment issues are a challenge. And now flying employees in for interviews is also a challenge. If you've tried to fly to Fargo, prices are significantly higher right now. So hoping they're able to get that position filled. Last week, I attended the Comprehensive Study Work Group Committee. We did spend a long time, almost three hours, working through the plan of recommendations. It's a very thorough document, getting really great input. Sometimes I think we go a little bit into the weeds, but I, I can honestly say that we're really trying to look at all, all avenues to see how this plan will continue to help Clay County for the next ten, ten to fifteen years. We do have some more work to, as we weren't able to get through the entire packet. But no, I, I had made the comment to our administrator that I think we should have input from this board on those, on those items. You know, I'm not sure what the best way to do that. I know we will have another public comment opportunity or open house style meeting, but certainly Commissioner Campbell and I have our own perspective on issues that we've seen affecting Clay County during our time on this board, but also value your input and perspective on that. And so I think between Matt and Steve, they're working on some, some way to get the rest of the plan to you for your input. And then yesterday, I attended the ARPA CARES Act Committee meeting. We had a long discussion on the PDQ for our cultural diversity community liaison, point of contact. We are getting really close to having that PDQ available for this board to hopefully approve, as we think this is a substantial step in making sure that all of our residents are able to understand and receive information in terms of public health, but also issues that have changed how the county does business because of COVID. So we did talk a little bit about that and had a discussion again on, on framing our categories for spending. Will look similar. Obviously, there are needs that we don't know lingering out there, what the, I don't know. If consequences of COVID is the best way to, to put that, but we're just not quite sure. All of the issues that have been brought forth because of COVID, so it's hard to, to come up with those parameters. But I think we're getting closer on that. And then had some other discussion on, not parole.
Pre-sentence and this investigation.
Yep, pre-sentence and investigation. So we will have more discussion on that when Janelle is able to attend that meeting. If I missed anything, I think Commissioner Campbell can grab it. Tomorrow is the Cast Clay Food Systems Commission meeting. I am cycling out of serving on that. I've served on that board since I was first elected. It's been a, a great and worthy cause for food systems issues within our region. I know that Commissioner Kaylee serves as my, as my alternate on that board. So I'm not sure tomorrow if they will ask for an additional member to be appointed on that. As we don't meet again until January, I think it would be appropriate, Colleen, if we just address that when we do our committee assignments on the first of the year, so don't let me forget that. And then also, I saw yesterday that past county commissioner Wayne Angersaw was honored at the City of Moorhead Council Meeting last night for having such a huge Moorheart, he was in the Moorheart Award. And I want to also send my appreciation and gratitude for Commissioner Angersaw's service on this board and advocacy for so many great areas of interest for our citizens. So congratulations, Wayne.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Ebbinghoff.
Thank you. I've got a two-week update. I missed our last commission meeting. I was at a family funeral in the Twin Cities. On the 27th, Wednesday, I attended the Greater Fargo-Moorhead EDC Executive Meeting. We went over the financials. No, no surprises there. The, there was a workforce marketing campaign to advertise for workforce in the Twin Cities area. Combined effort of the Chamber, the EDC, and the CVP. Each will pony up fifteen thousand dollars for this, and it was to drive clicks on social media to the Live in Fargo website. I did question the Minnesota side of this and what part this would influence. And the response was that this, this would drive it to the region. I still had some questions on that. We went further into the meeting and discussed the strategic planning update. We're going to have a six-hour strategic planning retreat here later today. Tom Iverson had conducted surveys with a number of people, and a couple of things that came out in the surveys was a concern and an interest in the desire to keep the EDC regional. And I expressed some of my concerns about that as well, and I will bring that up during the strategic planning. But I think Minnesota's got some specific strengths and challenges that we need to address. We certainly need to lobby in St. Paul, and we need an entity that can do that. I think border cities and border county issues are important. That may be viewed by some of our North Dakota partners as being competitive. There's just a lot of questions I've got on cost benefit at this point. I think we need to be part of the EDC. I think we also need something that is more regional and more oriented east towards St. Paul, as opposed to constant focus on Bismarck. So that'll be part of the discussions today. I think it was expressed as concerned by some of the members of the EDC in the survey they took, and I hope we can make some progress on that.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Ebbinghoff, thank you for your position on that. I know that we'll have a strong voice in those meetings. I think the subconscious persuasion is the hardest part for someone who's called Clay County home for almost my entire life. I think that the Live in Fargo is, is very clear that it's drawing to one specific. If we're really drawing to a metro, we will say metro or something else in that. There was a newsletter that came out, I think maybe in the last week and a half, of all the great notches that they are touting right now of successes. And Minnesota and Clay County were not mentioned once. Not once. And, you know, I, I, we can't compare a hundred percent to what's happening on the North Dakota side. I understand that. But you have to be able to put, to champion what each can hold on their own and, and advocate equally, although different. And I'm very, very concerned that the trend has just become that, while we are advocating for all of you, but, but we're just going to say Live in Fargo. If that was the case, you'd see us mentioned once to five or six times. I mean, I'm, I'm really struggling with that. It just is continuing. And I've not served on this board a very long time, but in that time, I can say that we're never, never allowed voice in that room by leaders of, not elected leaders from us. I'm not saying from you or Commissioner Wayland that served on that, or even Commissioner Campbell, who's served in that capacity from time to time. But the leaders have to be able to champion Clay County and Minnesota, and if they're not, we can speak with our dollars.
I, I have to concur with that, and we need a voice in the EDC. I think it's important we remain in it. We also need to develop resources on this side of the river that can have our voice heard in St. Paul, address the border county and border city issues, look at some of those, and I think a balance needs to be struck. If EDC understands that's part of our need, and they want to help us towards that end, the cost benefit should be reflected if they can do so effectively. But I heard the concern about the newsletter that went out last week. I went back and dug up the two previous ones in a very similar composition, so I'm concerned. And I think I, you know, make those concerns known. It certainly isn't an ultimatum, and there certainly seems to be an opinion among the group that Minnesota needs to be represented and needs to be a regional entity. And I hope that will be reflected in some of the progress they make.
I, I'll speak up too. I, I do serve on the Greater Fargo-Moorhead EDC Board. I know that Commissioner Ebbinghoff serves on the Executive Committee. The meetings that I'm there, it's often brought up. I want to also remind everybody that we do have members from the Moorhead City Council there primarily. I think the, the mayor is typically involved with that. I know Mayor Judd was, and he was always a strong advocate for what we're talking about here, and the need to have a Minnesota presence and a Minnesota solution to a lot of these issues going on. As well as we have MSUM that's there, Concordia College is there, and those are typically there. If it's not the president of those universities, it's somebody extremely high up there. And they also do a very good job in, in reminding that group that there is this side of the river that, that is invested in and, and needs to have some, you know, obviously some attention brought to this, the economic viability of this side of the river. So this, you know, it is kind of concerning when I, when I start to hear that they want to recruit people, and then they, they use the, what do you call it, Fargo?
Live in Fargo.
Live in Fargo. That is kind of concerning to me, and then we'll have to see how it would develop, sir, but more to come on that, I guess.
Later that day, I attended the Diversion Authority Finance Committee meeting virtually. As Commissioner Campbell covered in, in a couple of his reports on the Diversion Authority last week, there's a lot to be celebrated about the financial close. That was pretty much the majority of what we covered in the Finance Committee meeting. And on the Diversion Authority, the only thing I have to add that Commissioner Campbell didn't cover last week is to concur with him on the remarkable job that General Counsel John Shockley contributed this in bringing this project in with a savings of about fifty million dollars over the next thirty years and cutting twenty-seven years off of the projections on the sales tax over on the North Dakota side. He did an excellent job, and the people in this community benefited greatly from it.
I, I want to just clarify something. I, I don't know that the sales tax was cut. What was, what was cut was the, was the timeframe to pay off the debt.
The projected.
So I, you know, the, the sales tax implementation might still go that long, but at least the debt portion would, would not be the reason for it.
Yeah.
To go that long.
And that's, that's something that their voters would.
Right.
Would have a voice in.
Right.
But the ability to get this thing paid off twenty-seven years earlier than, than projected originally in the, in the first look at it is pretty good news for everybody. All of us, even on the Minnesota side, go across the river and spend money. And that's a sales tax cut that we'd all benefit from. Friday, the 5th, I went to the AMC Regional Meeting in Fergus Falls, hosted by Otter Tail County. Good meeting, as usual. We got an update on the opioid lawsuit and how it's going to impact on counties. And we established some legislative priorities by a vote there. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Kaylee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Tuesday, the 2nd, I attended a childcare roundtable and listening session, and I would like to share some of the highlights of things that were shared at that roundtable with you. This was also attended by Representative Markort, and the. And the folks that came to the listening session to speak included parents as well as childcare providers from Morehead and our surrounding communities, rural communities in the county. One of our center directors said that childcare money is made off of preschoolers. Most childcares do not make enough to offer health insurance to their employees. However, many of their employees' wages are so low that they qualify for medical assistance. This director's own family did not have health insurance, and she said they just wing it. One of the employees is a student at one of our local universities. She's been working at a center for a while. That center used the childcare stabilization funds, federal funds, to give their staff a $3 raise. And she said this was life-changing for her. It enabled her to focus more on her studies instead of trying to work overtime and continually cutting back. She said her grades were looking really great. She was really proud of her work, and she was committed to working in the industry as long as she could make a living wage. A mother shared that she had one of her children, her first child was in childcare, and then she got pregnant with twins. And after having those babies, was no longer able to afford childcare, so had to quit a job that she loved and work overnight while those babies were sleeping because the cost of care was so high. She said that she would love to pay the staff at the center all the money in the world if she had more money. She just couldn't make that work financially for her family. Another teacher shared that she often restricts her water intake because she knows that there is no time for bathroom breaks, and there are not extra staff at her center. So nobody can watch the kids while she takes a bathroom break. She is feeling forced out of the childcare industry and that the compensation they receive is not what they deserve. And they deserve the respect that professionals should be given. These are educators. A lot of them have master's degrees or degrees in child development, and they deserve that respect. They are shaping the brains of our children and our future workforce. Another director shared that she cannot give staff time off because they can't fill all of their staffing positions. She's had to raise tuition two times this year just to cover costs. And once those federal stabilization funds end in July, she will have to raise tuition again. Healthcare is a deal breaker for a lot of her staff when it comes to longevity. She can't afford to offer healthcare, and so they leave for other industries, even though they're passionate about early ed. Many of the providers shared that in August, they always hold their breath because the school systems hire all of their staff away. We're at a crisis point in our childcare industry. And so I just wanted my fellow commissioners to be aware of some of the things that I'm hearing. I think you all know I do have children in childcare too, and it is expensive, and it is a burden. And I have had to quit a job that I loved because the cost of care was too expensive. So I, I feel for all of these people. And some of the people in the room are folks that have taken care of my kids. So, thank you for listening to that. The next day, Wednesday, the 3rd, we had the Morehead City Planning Commission meeting. Record turnout of residents at that meeting. We just kept adding more and more and more chairs. The thing that everybody was coming to talk about is Enclave wanted to rezone a property at 630th Avenue South from community commercial to community mixed use. So the property that we're talking about there was the hotel just south of the interstate that's been vacant for several years. So Enclave at an auction purchased that property. And their idea is they're just going to raise the whole thing and put in apartment buildings. And there might be some office space in there as well. The project is not fully formed yet. They're still taking input. And so there was a lot of residents from that surrounding community, the church that's right next door. Everybody wants something to happen in this property. So they were not disputing the reason. They just wanted to be heard that whatever happens to this property should be a positive for the community there. There was a really good discussion, and that was approved to send to council. There was also a request for a vacation of easements within Comstock's Sixth Edition. This was just a very thin strip of property where there were some utilities. So we approved that. And then there is a request for a house moving permit for 6860 Second Street Northwest. This is of interest to the county because they will need to travel over a couple county roads to move this house. We were told that the moving company has to be bonded and would be held responsible for any damage to roads incurred. But I believe there will be, they will have to seek a permit from the county to drive over those county roads. And then lastly, there was an extension of the conditional use permit for wireless telecommunications at a tower. And we approved that as well. On Thursday, the 4th, I attended the Joint Powers Meeting in Dilworth. We talked about our upcoming retreat and what the agenda, the Intergovernmental Retreat, and what the agenda might look like for that. We also talked about how it might be nice if there was some kind of a service project we could do together as a group, something small to give back to our community in some way when we're all gathered together with that. So if there are ideas, feel free to share those. Friday, the 5th, I attended that AMC District Meeting, which Commissioner Ebinger already reported on. And that concludes my reports. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Gross.
On Thursday, I attended Beyond the Yellow Ribbon over Morehead. Most of the discussion was on getting, I don't know, Christmas baskets. For people that are overseas or have families here, getting, having some sort of gathering for the families that are by themselves during the Christmas period. So that was, National Guards throwing something, the Air Guard. And it seemed like every veterans organization is trying to do something for the families that are overseas. That was pretty much the primary discussion there. Friday, I too was at the District Meeting in Fergus Falls. And what I thought was interesting, when I look at our levy that we've got, I know, I think we're sitting right around 4.3. I know Steve will get it down some more, but there was only two other counties that were lower than we are. You know, so, hey, all of a sudden I thought, we're not doing so bad. And when I thought 4.3 is still a little high, there's only two counties that are lower than us. So I guess we're doing a good job. So, and I thought, I mean, and they talked about the opioid lawsuit settlement, stuff like that. But like I said, the levies, I thought was the most interesting there with everybody else. Everybody struck me. Yesterday, we had the Personnel Affairs Committee and the one thing with the assessor. We discussed that, so it's no use going to that again. And the next thing we had a big discussion on was COVID-19. For our employees that have, their kids are quarantined or whatever, but they're not sick. So they don't qualify for family leave, but they have to stay home to take care of their kids. So what do they do when they run out of their vacation time and stuff like that? So can we let them use sick leave, or which way do we go? So didn't settle anything on it, but very interesting situation that may be coming up. Those are my three.
Thank you. Yes.
I forgot one. I'm so sorry.
Mr. Kaylee.
On Thursday, I also attended the Local Advisory Council for Children's Mental Health. And we had a long discussion about Travis's Law and what that may look like or not look like and what's available locally. Travis's Law is about sending out, like, a mobile mental health crisis unit from dispatch when somebody calls 911 with a mental health emergency. Thank you.
All right. On Tuesday, November 2nd, we had a Diversion Authority Chair's Executive Meeting. At that meeting, we were introduced to our new lands director by, or Executive Director Jill Paulson. Her name is Jody Smith. She comes from the hospitality industry in North Dakota, and she was also in charge with all the oil issues related in North Dakota. So she's talking about how we can often have bad days. Her bad day, she said, was when she would see prices of oil change to the point where it would be a $1 billion loss to the state of North Dakota in a real rapid time. So she was talking about her involvement with that. But it was nice to meet her, and I think she'll do a really good job working with our landowners and moving this project forward. We also got an update on the Director of Finance situation. There were 50 applications that were submitted for that position. In the end, there was, they felt there was nobody who really met the qualifications that they were looking for. So that position will be read advertised. I brought up the idea about the, we've all, we've all heard about the Red River Valley Alliance. They are the group that, the successful bidder for the P3 project. And with that being such an expensive project that it is, I brought up the fact that at some point in time, we should have a better understanding of who they are and who the members are, whether they're in the, you know, construction business, engineering business, investment firms. So I think we're going to be looking for, just for all of our board members to at least have an idea of who these people are moving forward. On the November 4th, I attended the Clay County Joint Powers Committee. And again, that was been discussed. We talked about the Intergovernmental Retreat. And I guess I don't need to, we did get a, yeah, I'll just leave that at that. And on the same day, we had our Clay County Comprehensive Plan meeting again. I think it was like meeting number, committee meeting number five. And as Commissioner Mojo said, a lot of details were gone through. The one area that probably remained that we didn't get to would have been the area of environmental issues related to the comprehensive plan and some, and a little bit of economic development issues. On the Friday, the 5th, I attended the District Four Meeting. And that's been well-covered. I know that we have, in regards to the opioid lawsuit settlement, there are going to be some requirements from our boards to make sure we pass a resolution regarding that settlement. And I think the timeframe of that is to be done in December. So Steve will be looking for you to guide us in that, making sure that we fall within the proper timeline to do that. On the 8th, we had the American Rescue Plan, and Commissioner Mojo talked about that. We talked about our, the last time, we had six different groups that we're looking at. We're looking at if we're going to keep those same groups. We talked about, in the, in the area of the business relief in the past, how we might be able to, how we might be able to do that through support services when you talk about workforce issues. You talk about childcare issues. That also has an impact on businesses. Not only is it a daycare issue itself, amongst those within daycare, not having enough of them and so on and so forth, and how we can handle that, that can also fall under community resiliency, which right now, I think our plan was to keep all of those same categories in place for right now. And let's see, we did have that, that, yeah, so I think that was, I think that was the biggest issue. We did have Lori talked a little bit about the need for, under the audit system, the last CARES Act is being audited now. It's in that process. And based on how we might distribute funds to other organizations might have an impact on to the degree that we have to monitor and have information. So that was worthwhile, and I'm glad Lori was there to make sure to give us a heads up as we commit funds moving forward and how we're going to make sure that they meet the criteria and then the process that we have to use to document and maintain the system. So then yesterday, we also had, or we also had a Personnel Issues Committee meeting. The assessor's deal was on the agenda that Nancy brought forward today. And then we did have, as Commissioner Gross talked about, this discussion regarding COVID and quarantining and how that, those things do not qualify basically under our sick, current sick leave. So we had quite a discussion on that. I think there's more to come on that. I think we're, we want to, I think we're probably going to see what happens a month down the road from now. But that, that's probably going to certainly be brought up in the future. So I believe that covers my report. Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday after board, I talked with Lucas Spath, the Superintendent in Hellstad, about some potential water projects that they're looking at could affect northern Clay County in utilization of ARPA funds. We'll have some discussions on our ARPA committee as we move forward. On the 3rd, I met with Sheriff Amptin in regard to the Regional Dispatch Center and also the Correctional Center positions that were before you today. I would note that last night at Dilworth City Council, they did approve the two-year contract for Regional Dispatch Services. On the 3rd, we participated in the Joint Powers Comprehensive Plan that's been addressed, or excuse me, the Joint Powers Meeting in Dilworth, and that's been addressed by Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Kaylee. Participated in the Comprehensive Plan that afternoon. That's also been addressed by Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Mojo. On the 4th, also worked board prep with Colleen, had a series of conversations in regards to HR. We received notification that afternoon of the OSHA, Federal OSHA release of the vaccination and testing rules. That has since been halted by the Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals pending a review. But again, we'll continue to prepare. We had some discussions about that also at our district meeting on the 5th. In regards to the opioid settlement, I did respond and essentially register with the Attorney General's Office. That doesn't make this board responsible to agree to that, but will provide us the additional information that we'll need to know and make that decision. Currently, currently, the AMC Board of Directors of, and representative staff are working with Attorney General's Office in this potential settlement, and they're hoping to have that completed by the end of November. The ARPA meeting, we've discussed that in detail. I would just note that there currently is federal legislation at the House of Representatives that may provide additional flexibility of spending for ARPA dollars that will include transportation. that will include transportation and infrastructure and also some additional government services. And so stay tuned there. Participate in the PIC meeting that's been addressed. I also met with Matt Jacobson yesterday in regards to the comp plan. For those citizens coming into the courthouse here over the next few weeks, they're going to notice some construction projects will start with painting. Recarpeting project has started. They'll also be starting here shortly with the courtroom across the hall. Would note, I think you all received an email this week from Technology Services that we got you a new printer in there. That one didn't always work so well. And so hopefully that will, we can get that set up with them so that will be better used. Two different items for action. We have the AMC Annual Conference coming up in December. And at that point, we have to designate voting members in two different areas. One of that is the MCIT Voting Delegate. Commissioner Gross has been in that role as one of the voting members and Commissioner Wayland was last year. And so we are, Commissioner Gross has indicated that he's not going to be attending the conference this year. And so we are going to be in need of identifying an alternate for the MCIT delegate. And so I would be looking for any commissioner who may have interest in that.
Well, we need both a voting member and an alternate.
Or, right.
MCIT, right?
For the MCIT, yeah.
Make a motion to appoint our chair as our voting member for MCIT.
Second.
Have you sat in on those meetings? That's probably why.
You're the financial whiz.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried, and we need an alternate. Who wants to learn about MCIT? Dave?
I'll make a motion to appoint Commissioner Ebinger as the alternate for MCIT.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Kaylee. No further discussion needed. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Same.
I have been to those meetings, but judging from Commissioner Mojo's smile, it must be a lot of fun.
We appreciate your service.
It's, it's, there's a lot to them. It's important meetings.
That meeting will be held on Monday, and Colleen, I'll get you that information for the specific time. The other piece that we need to look at is the AMC voting delegates for the priorities for the upcoming year. Historically, we've had all five commissioners. We've had Highway County Engineer, we've had Planning and Zoning, and we've also had Solid Waste Manager. Again, with Commissioner Gross not being in attendance, I could step in this year if that would be fine with the board.
Yes.
I have a question.
Yeah, I think that would, that would cover our eight, right?
Yes.
Are the other three attending?
They are. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mojo, they are.
Make a motion to appoint the four of us, our administrator, and then our Planning and Zoning Director, our County Engineer, and our Solid Waste Administrator.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Mojo, second by Commissioner Kaylee. Any further discussion? The voting on, the, that would be on platform issues as well as the officer elections, and that will be held on Wednesday morning. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Motion carried.
And just two quick things. One, just to notify, our city, our Clay County offices will be closed on November 11th in recognition of Veterans Day. I want to thank for all those that have served and currently and previously, and for those in this room that have. And then lastly, just a reminder, we have our township, annual township meeting on Monday. Starts, I think their business meeting starts at 8:30, and we'll have different representatives from our departments starting at 9 o'clock at the Dilworth Community Center. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Colleen, anything else for us? Aaron in? We're adjourned.